Just call it to order. All right, well, welcome, yes, welcome to the Human Resources and Labor Relations Subcommittee. Calling to order, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Chairperson Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Martin, two present, one absent.
So I would also like to recognize my, Mr. Dakota, who's a Subcommittee member, Ms. Dougherty, who is a School Committee member, and Mr. Hoi is also here from the School Committee, as well as Latifah Phillips, Chief Equity and Engagement Officer, Jim Hall, Chief Operating Officer, and Dr. Boyd, Superintendent. Thank you. All right. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight's meeting is to discuss what ultimately will be my evaluation goals, but I think also an opportunity to reflect on where our organizational goals are. My position is that the evaluation of a Superintendent essentially is an evaluation of the organization as a whole. My goals should be, and you will see here, are recommended to be intricately aligned with our strategic goals as an organization. So I'm recommending here that we adopt goals for my evaluation for this year. As stated, within the attached packet, you have that document as well as the Massachusetts Evaluation Tool and Framework. Dr. Hall's here if you have questions about the process and the tool itself. However, I was intending just to walk you through the goals. Contractually, we are to adopt mutually acceptable goals that are, again, aligned with the educational goals of the organization. Madam Chair, if you will, I provided some aspect of the packet that contextualized the goals. I don't know that there's a need for us to go through all of that context. I believe the Subcommittee members and the Committee members are well aware of the strategic plan and the core beliefs and our fundamental commitments. So I might suggest we start right at page seven of the document. So page seven, within your packet, lists four goals which I'm recommending. These are our goals within our strategic plan. I'm recommending that these also be the goals for this year's evaluation. Goal number one would be improving academics and student achievement at every school site. Two, improving operational efficiency across the system. Three, ensuring that every school is safe and welcoming to every student and every family every day. And four, increasing acute community engagement and empowering families as partners in the educational process. Again, these should be commonplace to the Committee. I see these in my sleep at this point. I would imagine they're pretty consistent for the Committee. You just took part in a Performance Management Subcommittee where we talked about how we're going to start to build out our data dashboard, which you'll also start to see reflected in here. If you flip the page to page eight, what I'll walk you through very briefly with each goal is just the progress and benchmarks from the prior year. And then we'll go into the measurable actions and outcomes that I'm recommending for this year. There's a, the benchmarks and progress for goal one are listed on page eight. I don't know that there's a need for me to read through all of the bullets. If the Committee would like me to, I can walk you through that, but it is there for the record and also for your reflection if you have any questions.
Dougherty?
I don't know if the millions are watching tonight, but is this up on the screen at all or no?
It's not up on the screen, but it is uploaded in the packet online.
Oh, so they could just open it from the website and see. Yeah, I don't think we have to read them out. I just thought if you had it to put up, but thank you.
It is, Madam Committee Member, I did talk with the Chair earlier, and given the layout here that your backs would have been to the screen, I didn't know that there was value to have tech staff and so on to manage the technology. There's a, so if you flip then to page nine, building on that progress and benchmarks, I'm recommending four actions and deliverables aligned with goal one. Those include our school quality improvement plans. We launched these last year as part of our school site-based budgeting and our process of differentiated accountability. Each school engages now in a quality improvement planning process. Now we're going to be working to expand that process and make sure that it also includes, and this will include some of what Mr. Dakota was saying even last night and previously, making sure that we're also assessing those gaps within this year as we plan to next year. And it's important to recognize here that there's, you'll notice a balancing act. This process here in this, for this year, what I'm recommending is that not only do we look at how we're adapting to this environment, but also how are we readying and preparing ourselves for next year? Making sure that we understand that while this year is an anomaly, hopefully, for our entire country, it is still the only first grade year that a child will have, their only second grade year. And while it's, it can be perhaps viewed in a vacuum for us as adults, for students, we've got to look at it within the context of their entire educational trajectory. So you'll notice a balancing act here within each of these measurable outcomes that enables us to account for the unique nature of this year's environment, but also making sure that we're continuing with our strategic plan going forward. That's one aspect of these quality improvement plans. Some districts, some communities are almost putting everything on pause. I'm not suggesting that, nor have we been working in that way here. We've actually been continuing to adapt and move forward with our strategic plan, which the Committee wisely adopted as a one plus four, recognizing that the one year's an anomaly, but it's within the context of a long-term plan. The second measurable is targeted support for chronically underperforming schools. You may recall, we launched the Renaissance Network. Unfortunately, we had to adjust funding and resources for the Renaissance Network within our budgeting process, but we can't lose sight of the fact that we've had significant gaps in variability across our school performance, and we have seven schools that still remain identified by DESI for turnaround. So here, the measurable is that we are going to be implementing virtual instructional rounds with these schools through a professional learning community model. You may be familiar with medical rounds, where teaching hospitals engage in a process where learning, doctors learn together, walking through various locations within surgical ward, for instance, making sure they're identifying and understanding and working together. If you've ever watched the TV show House, for instance, they engage in this process together where they analyze symptoms, talk together about possibilities for improvement and treatment going forward. Adapting that model to education has been something that, at least within the past decade, has been rather prominent as part of not only a professional development endeavor, but also as a learning process and an improvement process. We're going to be adapting that model through, for what we're calling virtual rounds within our Renaissance Network. It's going to be, I think, interesting as well as rewarding, again, adapting to the environment that we're in.
Ask a quick question on that. With the virtual rounds, is it one school at a time, or is it many schools together exploring?
So we do, we'll do one school at a time, several professionals, both central office as well as school-based, other, sometimes other principals will join, particularly when there's a mentor principal that's working with the school. But teachers as well as principals join based on the instructional focus of the school, and indicators will move through classrooms, observing, looking for evidence of that particular focus area. Based on that evidence, we'll understand both the progress instructionally as well as be able to discuss opportunities for improvement. It's not an evaluative process. You're only in classrooms for about 15 minutes at a time, but if you cut across enough classrooms, you can see the trend of the school and evidence of the school in terms of progress instructionally according to that focus area. So, does that answer your question? The next is the building out our digital learning plan. Again, remember though, this is something that we had talked about doing. It's accelerated through the COVID environment. We invested, the School Committee invested millions of dollars in technology resources. Here, we're going to have to make sure, and I'm going to recommend to you that one of our deliverables, what we're building out, is a digital learning plan, which is a multi-year plan, to make sure that not only are we leveraging those resources this year, but we're also using this opportunity, leveraging this opportunity to build forward and accelerate our process towards 21st century classrooms. There's, the last is our secondary school reform, which we've had many conversations about, particularly at the, around the time when we were launching last year our search for a new head of school. At that time, we talked about the many needs of the high school, and we said, let's first get our head of school and then allow the head of school to engage in a process and be part of this process. The head of school will be a part of it, but this is not simply about Lowell High School. You'll notice here, we're talking about our alternative pathways as well as our magnet options. This will be a multi-year plan that we'll be launching here this year to align with our Portrait of a Graduate work, which you'll hear about within one of the other goal areas. Those are the actions and deliverables for goal one that I'm recommending here for this year. Any questions, or would you like me to move on to goal two?
Go ahead, on to goal two. Thank you.
All right, so following this?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Dakota has a question.
I have a quick question. Is it a possibility that we can provide you with a truncated evaluation since it's, you're trying to evaluate an abnormal year, as it were, to, you know, to what we would normally have had an opportunity to see you in action in two normal years as opposed to three quarters of a normal year and then this?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an interesting time, and I tell everyone, this is the most difficult year that certainly I've experienced in education. This isn't the environment you hired me to operate in. It's the environment that we all find ourselves in. It's a, no, we've all received training on crisis management. I don't know that anybody's received training around this type of environment that we find ourselves in. I might suggest that we look at it going forward this year, that certainly it's going to be a truncated process. By the time you actually adopt these, it's going to be December. Contractually, what we agreed to when we, when you hired me was an October approval process each year with a June evaluation. So you'll still end up in June to stay aligned with the Commonwealth's framework. But I, in talking with the Chair, we think we can meet that timeframe, but it is going to be, it's going to be a six-month timeframe. What I ask is the same thing that we ask all of our leaders and supervisors, is understanding the environment we're in, making sure that this is going to continue to evolve. And while I'm suggesting things here, our data was just released of the COVID data, and I don't know if you noticed, but yet again, we're continuing to surge here in Lowell, whether we're remote or in person. We don't even know that for the entirety of the year. That'll change some things. So with that, Dr. Hall, is there anything specific within the framework or the tool that would cause concern with the truncated window? You still have to submit by June 30, I believe?
You would still have the ending, same ending deadline unless you all agree otherwise?
Which, let me make sure I can, let's see. So the ending deadline is June 1st. June 1st, and then it can be submitted up to the state throughout the course of that month, but the, contractually, the deadline is June 1st.
Mr. Hoi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad I can make these meetings now. It's important. But my colleague Andy brought up a good point about his evaluation. He's been here over a year, and to me, the whole team, School Committee included, busiest year I've ever seen. I've never taken so many calls, so many messages. I think he's being humble about, let's forget, I thought, if I'm correct, the way he just sounded to me was, forget what I did in the past year, and let's move forward and just evaluate me on what I do next. I don't really think that's fair. I think no matter how busy we are, we should come up with an evaluation for the year that he was here. That's just how I feel because I think he's trying to be humble over here. And it's a terrible year to be a Superintendent, and I think he did a good job, and I think we should evaluate him on what he's done. Thank you for that.
Most certainly, I think that's something that certainly the Chair and I can, can talk through. Thank you, Mr. Hoi, and thank you, Committee Member. There's, so if you go to goal two, again, following the same approach here, goal two is improving operational efficiency across the system. On page 10, you have benchmarks and progress from last year going into this year. We're goal two, was, I'm suggesting and recommending the measurable deliverables of data-driven decision-making. This is the key performance indicator work that you've already taken part in and building out those dashboards, as well as school-level performance scorecards to monitor progress and target support for school improvement. It's important work going forward. The diversity recruitment and hiring is around the implementation of our Diversifying Teacher Leaders Program, which actually I'm looking forward to having Ms. Phillips share out with the Committee at our next School Committee meeting, a full presentation of that important work. We know diversity hiring was actually something that was talked about considerably even during the interview process when I interviewed for the job, in an area where we're making progress, but we have a long way, long way to go. And I'm looking forward to sharing that work out and continuing to benchmark that work with the Committee. Fair student funding, phase two. This is important to keep in mind. We don't just do something one time and then it's done. We continue to improve it over time. We launched this last year, if you recall. Important systemic work undertaken by the Committee to completely redesign your entire school-based budgeting process. This will be phase two of that, which will allow us to start to internalize a lot of the capacity building, moving from the external consultant support to an internalized process within our finance office. And then I'm not going to delve too deeply into four. We've had a lot of discussion about this. We're currently terming it transportation system redesign. I believe it speaks for itself. This is going to be a major undertaking and a major deliverable that we're looking forward to pursuing and was recommended by the Committee. I believe it's necessary to identify it here. There is a, which brings up another point. As we identify these things, each time we start doing something, it requires us to stop doing something. So here, this would, this would be an example of that had we already undertaken this process and then identified this as a need. Fortunately, in terms of timing here, we're talking about these actions after we already identified something as seismic as that initiative is. The next one on goal three, if you go to page 12, again, following the same format, the benchmarks and progress, the goal three is ensuring that every school is safe and welcoming to every student and every family every day. The actions and deliverables here are our culturally and linguistically sustaining practices work. This is, again, work that I know some aspects of this with our anti-racism training, Ms. Clark and Ms. Dougherty already participated in. Been really proud that Mr. Hoi's identified equity as being his platform for the year. A lot of this work relates right within our culturally and linguistically sustaining practices work around a multi, multi-year, cross-disciplinary, culturally and linguistically responsive implementation plan. You'll notice this come up every year within this indicator. This is going to be multi-year work. This is not a one and done. We'll be able to deliver on it this year. And you'd notice, Ms. Phillips here with us because you'll hear this notion of equity cutting across every goal that we have. That's the, that's the real foundation of our strategic plan going forward. Social emotional learning, you heard a presentation already from Ms. Killiley. Often when we talk about schools being safe and welcoming, I think we're often talking about the facility themselves, which we'll get to, and not talking about our young people who are there. This is about safe and welcoming schools. Social and emotional learning is an important aspect of that, takes on even more critical aspect during this pandemic, and you heard that presentation. Delivering on that work is going to be an important measurable deliverable for this year. Our facility safety audits, you've heard about this within the COVID-19 protocols. We have to include that here. But even beyond that, Dr. Hall's office has undertaken a facility safety audit review that we began last year that we'll, we'll continue going forward. Look forward to sharing some of that work with you as well. And then four is the school assignment policy analysis. Remember, we, this has been, again, a conversation that came up even back to the interview. It's a policy adjustment that the Committee made for our kindergarteners this year. It makes sense for us to analyze it. It is part of our strategic plan. This is not suggesting any one direction, but that we need to engage in this analysis, particularly as you start to consider that shift we made with kindergarteners that will be coming first graders for next year. Seeing head nods doesn't require further explanation on what that, as a reminder of what that policy shift was for our kindergarteners. All right. Goal four, increasing community engagement and empowering families as partners in the educational process. Again, a lot of momentum here last year within this goal area. If you go to page 15, here are the measurables that we're, I'm recommending for this year's evaluation period. Communication and outreach to families of linguistically diverse backgrounds. Again, a lot of work was done there previously, prior to my coming last year, and a lot of the learning from last year is that much of the communication that was happening and going out was in English only, even though 69 different languages are spoken across our district and were the second most diverse, linguistically diverse, community in the Commonwealth. So now it's about developing measurement tools which start to capture the impact of that, of that language access plan on family satisfaction. Site-based budgeting is phase two. You remember that was a significant undertaking last year. Now we can include an expanded timeline for collaboration with school site councils and greater alignment, again, if you, with those school quality improvement plans. So you should see across goals, the interconnectedness and interrelatedness of each goal area. So you'll start to see references from one to the other. The Portrait of a Graduate work, you, the prior Subcommittee, you had a chance to talk through that. Really extremely important work, again, that you saw connects back now to what we're looking at with secondary school reform. This is going to be important work for us to deliver on this year. And then work that might not have as much of a deliverable in terms of something tangible, but I, I think extremely important to our forward progress here is our Lowell Student Advisory Council, an elevating student voice within our district's level decision-making. We had our first meeting last month, and I tell everybody all the time, it was best meeting, best meeting of the year to be able to engage our young people. They actually, the first task was around the race, anti-racism reporting protocol that the Committee heard and having our students weigh in on that, be able to think through it with them, even prior to the Committee thinking through it, I think, is an important part of the decision-making process. And that's what I'm recommending as the measurable for, the last measurable for goal four. If you flip to page 16, it's a simple matrix that takes you through our core beliefs, fundamental commitment, strategy, and priorities. Again, you know, the context for these goals. And then page 17 is a one-pager. For those of you with great eyesight, it does look a lot bigger on screen. That gives you all of the goals with the aligned measurable actions and deliverables. So, Mr. Dakota, for your question about the truncated timeline, we didn't truncate the work. So you'll see here, this is, I'm recommending 16 measurable actions across four different goal areas for evaluation for this year. With that, I'll stand to listen to feedback, questions. The expectation that I would have is that we can bring this forward at the next Committee meeting, making whatever adjustments that the Subcommittee is recommending here this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Getting back to, I think it was goal three, talking about the meals that kids were getting and so forth, has there been any discussion with Aramark to elevate the quality of the grab-and-go meals?
Yeah, you know, it's, so let me first, I'm going to yield to Dr. Hall, but I, you know, we talked about the momentum we were generating last year. Remember, this was one of the last decisions prior to us learning about the pandemic. I want to say this was late February, if I recall. Mr. Hoi, you actually came out and looked at some of the food and tasted some of the food with me of the, remember, we upgraded it to the highest quality of food from Aramark across our cafeterias that we, we had just launched that. Dr. Hall, for our grab-and-go, is there, are there those same types of opportunities there that the Committee had committed to last year with the cafeteria meals?
I'll have to check, Mr. Dakota, on what the pricing options are because there are different types of upgrades due to the delivery mechanisms.
I'm, I'm sure the choices are limited as to how, how much they can elevate that, but it would be nice to know that if, if there's a possibility to be able to raise it, that would be probably a good thing. Just looking forward to trying to, trying to ease the pain, as it were. We're trying to help our families as much as possible, our kids as much as possible. And if there are meals that are going out there that are just not being eaten, what a waste. But if we were to upgrade the quality of that grab-and-go, perhaps it would be a far better quality kind of eating for our students, similar to what they might have gotten before. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Hoi?
Thank you. This isn't the first time we've had a problem with food. When you have satellite meals compared to when you make nice meals in the schools, and we have over, what, 20 schools that can do home cooking? The pandemic has stopped all that. So we're still giving out more than a half a million meals. And when you satellite meals, you're going to get a bad meal now and then. You're going, you're supposed to even take temperatures of food when you satellite food and you're moving it, like, let's say with our food truck. But to me, anytime you satellite different meals, you're going to run across a bad meal here and there. And if I remember correctly, Mr. Gignac found a real bad meal up at the LeBlanc School, and that started a big deal, you know? But I won't say much more about it, but it's going to happen. But when you give out more than half a million meals and people are coming from all over to get them, people are hurting for food. It is a big issue, so I'm glad you brought that up, Andy. But we have to look into it.
We would have to let Mr. Gignac know if there was a baked potato day because that was his favorite.
Hopefully, they do more baked potato days, yeah, for sure.
I yearn for the days that we're talking about baked potatoes at the School Committee meetings. Yeah, a nice return to yesteryear, huh?
Ms. Dougherty, do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
I'm good. I guess I think that it's very ambitious, everything that you've laid out, and of course, and I know this is a trite comment, the devil is in the details and looking at, you know, metrics that'll really show something as opposed to just saying we did it. How do we know we did it well? One thing that jumps out to me that's very near and dear to my heart is the family engagement piece and building on what we started last year with the school site councils in particular. We're in such a crazy environment right now. Everybody's remote. But I'm thinking it was so rushed last year, trying to get these committees together because many of our schools, even though mandated by law, did not have active school site councils, trying to train them. And I was just wondering if you're planning on, like, revisiting professional development for our school site councils as we, you talk about phase two. So what, like, what would that entail?
Yeah, that's, so, yeah, you're looking at, so for the rest of the Committee, Ms. Dougherty's referring to what's being site-based budgeting there, working with our school site councils, which was the big, the big task. Well, we have to take a lot of that work now virtual, and also it's going to be around an ex, further, an extended timeframe. All of our schools actually have been engaging with their school site councils now even prior to the budgeting process because they're up and active at our schools. Remember, last year, we learned that many schools didn't even have these, so their very first task was just in the spring for some of them, going with the school sites council summit. So now they've been up and going. We're going to be working with our schools. I just talked with principals this morning that we're going to start getting out to them their calendar of timeline and due dates going into the spring, quite an overwhelming process for our schools to start thinking about planning for next year. Part of that's going to be a more extended timeframe around looking at their quality improvement plans, which will be work with their school site councils, as well as then a budget that's aligned with those improvement plans. And so you'll And so you'll, you'll see that occur across. Shifting it to virtual is going to have to be part of Phase Two, which wasn't planned, but that's going to be a part of it, really around that extended timeline and making sure we're spending more time around the quality improvement plan itself to make sure that we've got true alignment around the direction the school's going and the budget, the budgeting tool.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. I'm Madam Mayor. I am so sorry. Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Hall.
Some of the things I picked up on that are, that are dear to me is like digital learning plan would be one, secondary school reform would be another one, diversity recruitment and hiring, anything to do with HR. To me, the past decade and a half, we've had major issues with the HR. What I've seen, the improvements in the, the past year and some of the hires we had, sometimes you're going to have a hard time finding staff of color, especially when it's for like, let's say, the Hispanics. But it's very important to me to have someone, if they don't have the right color, to make sure they can speak Spanish. And I know Dr. Boyd's already done that with a few of his new hires. And since Jim Hall's been in charge of the HR, I see good things happening. It takes a long time to get HR squared away, without a doubt. The last time I remember it was flawless is when Dr. Helen Flanagan had it. Most of the staff were as happy as can be. I never, I, I wish we could get back to those days. When the HR office is shining, the system shines. So thanks again for the, giving me the time.
Thank you. Mr. Howe, can I take opportunity just to say the phrasing is people of color? People of color, so.
Thank you very much. People of color.
People of color. There is, there is, but I think you're, you're pointing out really important, remember the amount of progress we've made, which these times is always important to also look at the progress we've made. Remember, it wasn't too long ago, we were talking about no HR office at all. Remember, we had just one clerk running the office with Dr. Hall, who at that time was the labor attorney who had just picked it up because he saw the gap. It actually wasn't an assignment of his at all. There was just nobody else able to do the work, so he was working and partnering with Ms. Jarvis. So we've built out an entire HR office, and now we're able to start picking up some important initiatives that are being built out and led by that HR office. And I think that's an important recognition there, Mr. Howe, about how we set the foundation and we continue to build on it, which is why we need a multi-year plan and why we can't look at this year as just being a pure anomaly that's going to put everything on pause. We've got to continue to grow and build.
And since he corrected me on something, I'd like to just come back on a few more. We also have social emotional learning on this list of 16 things. We have school-based budgeting, something very close to my heart because we're changing that. Portrait of a graduate, which we only had one meeting on. I hope we have 10 more. So there's a lot of things in there that are really key to my heart. Not all of them, because there's some things that I really need a, a lot of education on, but there's at least eight things in this 16, 16 groups here that I think are very, very important for us to move on with. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to go back to something Ms. Dougherty said, I wonder if, I know last year when we were doing the school-based budgeting, there was professional development offered for school site councils. Is that something that might be offered again virtually? And I, and I wonder if there might be, for our school site councils, because they are remote, if perhaps we might even have greater participation now? That's a question, maybe something we can look at.
Ms. Phillips was, had shepherded that initiative. So I'll, I'll take, I'll take the note. And I think if you recall, I shared out, just to brag a little bit about Ms. Phillips, she's, this is now the second system where she's kind of facilitated that work out across school site councils. She's never done it within a pandemic. So whether we can shift, we found a way to shift everything virtual at this point. We've become very, very accustomed to, to shifting things to Zoom as a full community. So high confidence that we can do it. But I'm not going to commit Ms. Phillips to it yet.
Right.
But high confidence we'll be able to deliver on it.
Mr. Dakota?
Yeah, thank you very much. Kind of on that same line, I've been wondering about how we, how Zoom happens to work where whoever is actually doing the speaking at that point, they get the screen time? Is there any way that in, like, for the school site council meeting perhaps, if we're done, to do a visual, a virtual one, I'm sorry, to have everyone on screen so that they can see each other and, and really have a better sense of, of people's reactions to things as opposed to just having the speaker and, and not being able to see how the, how everyone else on, on the council is reacting to that?
It depends on what device you're using. There, it's actually an option right within Zoom. So if you're using your phone, I don't, you don't get that option of being able to look at the grid. But if you're actually using a laptop device or a tablet device, it's a, you can, you can click right on there. And, yeah, we can support our schools. Our schools are more expert than us. The best expert, though, on Zoom is Dr. Hall, sitting right next to me. He's, he's figured out every, every trick in the book on.
Ms. Clark was my teacher.
Oh, Ms.
Kind of like in The Color of Money, she didn't teach me everything she knows.
So, yeah, Mr. Dakota, it depends on the device. So if you, if you don't have that option on the current device you're using, talk to Ms. Clark and she'll, and she'll show you which device will give you that option.
So I, I mean, I see that it is, I think, ambitious, as Ms. Dougherty said, but really, we know because of all the conversations we've had, a lot of this work is really already underway and much of it is multi-year. This is a really, a lot of this work is really getting us to a, a starting point or just beginning. And we'll have, you know, many years to kind of watch it grow and see as things improve here within the district. And I do see that we can really take away, there are going to be some measurables. There might not be measurables just yet because in some cases, this is just being created. But we are, at the end of this year, even in the setting that we're in, I do see that we are going to certainly have dashboards that's going, that are going to give us information, assessments on social emotional learning, for example. We can see where schools are, where they started, where they are at the end of the year, and, and where they go next year. The Lowell Student Advisory Council, I'm curious, how, what, what do you see as a measurable there? Is it participation? What are you thinking, Dr. Boyd?
Yeah, the, the first is development. We now have one. So it's full recruitment and a full initiation orientation, training process for the students. Then we go through agenda setting with, with the students. The students will ultimately start to, start to take a co-leadership role. Mr. Osorio, who you, you met now a couple of times over, this is one of the aspects of his work around building climate within our schools that are student-centered and student-empowered. So he's building out the district level. And then the next part of that is going to be around school-based student advisory councils for all of our secondary schools. So you'll, you'll have a, you'll have full membership, Ms. Clark. You'll have agendas that are set and then initiatives that are undertaken by students. And I believe you actually heard from some of our students that were reporting out during your last subcommittee meeting. A lot of credit to Manny Wapo, you had a chance to, you had a chance to meet. Young man who took it upon himself to reach out to the superintendent as a high school student and said, here's some things that we need to work on as a district. I met him last year and based, him raising his hand and saying, here, how as a student can I get involved? And this has been some of the outgrowth from there. So you're starting to see some of the students being involved from there.
I'd like, I'd like to add something else, that when I see this digital learning plan and then we talk about low-performing schools, I look at one of them and it's the Stockloso. When you talk about school site budgets, the Stockloso, you can learn something off a school that they call low-performing. That principal, Mr. Kadesi, took a little bit of money each year and kept investing it into Chromebooks, new projectors that cost $2,500 apiece up on all his ceilings. And his school is basically, I like to say, up the snuff because of thinking outside the box. So the school site budgets that are coming to the city knew, that's the big one for me. It's like, are we going to give all the schools enough money, you know, fairness in the money? And I think it's probably the biggest problem we might have, making sure we spread the money out fairly. I think that's probably going to be our number one problem, but thanks again.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Howe. And that, that starts to bring us back to that fair student funding and how we have really got to keep our eye on enrollment as well as state funding going forward in Chapter 70. These same questions about funding that we had last year, unfortunately, are going to continue likely going into next year. And now we're also complicated by the fact that we're seeing declining enrollment, not only here, but across the state. We're currently looking at about two and a half to 3% in the district. Remember, last year, part of our fair student funding, we held all schools harmless, meaning regardless of where their student enrollment was, they at least got what they had the prior year. That may not be the context we find ourselves in, but now we have a mechanism to ensure that when we have to look at funding in a way that it's a downfunding year, it is done equitably based on student needs. So now, even though we didn't necessarily anticipate this environment, we're already, you'll still be able to realize the benefits of the structure and the infrastructure that we created. Which I will tell you, as a school committee, that's a significant accomplishment on the part of the school committee for you to lift that type of redesign of your budgeting system within that short window of time to be able to do that as a school committee. I think that's a, that's a real testament to the effectiveness of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there's, is there any more feedback or questions about the goals as written? Good, okay. I think then it would make sense, as Dr. Boyd pointed out, we have a deadline by June 1st, but I think it would make sense if we do a mid-year check-in. You know, I mean, much of this is going to be part of some of the conversations we're having throughout as topics come up, but it seems to make sense that perhaps we would do something maybe in March or, or so to kind of go over and a check-in point. Reasonable?
It is. And I also would suggest that under the reports of superintendent, the start-to-become, some of those reports that you start to look towards, yes, the next one that we plan to share with you is the Diversifying Teacher Leaders. But if at any time, any of these deliverables, the committee's looking for progress on, we can do that at any committee meeting under the reports of the superintendent. Just give me a call and let me know.
Okay. So at this point, do we need a motion to bring this forward to the full committee? For, for mid-year, but that these are the goals as, as written?
Yeah, these would be the annual goals. So the adoption of the annual goals, we're delayed on that, should have been done by October. So I want to make sure that as quickly as possible, we get those established for the June 1. We wouldn't want to adjust these. We're going to be basically at mid-year already, so you're.
So you're going to make a motion to adopt the annual goal presented by the subcommittee?
Present, yep.
There is a.
Sure. And then, as we spoke about, just to align them to the actual rubric that is used by, Desi will just work to build, build in the, into each of the categories that are actually up on the, on the form itself.
Do you, you and I can work through that crosswalk if you're open to that?
Exactly, exactly. Yep, just plugging them in where they belong. No, you didn't need to, nope, sorry. I'm doing things out of order. All right, well.
Just, you need a motion to accept it as a report of progress?
Okay. So would you, motion to accept it as a report of progress? Mr. Dakota?
Wouldn't you, Ms. Sheehan, don't they need to make that motion and adopt that motion to bring it forward to the committee?
They did. Mr. Dakota made a motion to adopt the annual goal.
Oh.
I did a second.
And bring it to the full committee, seconded by Ms. Clark.
Yep, and we'll do, we'll do the same for this. Mr. Dakota is, yeah.
Was accepting as a report of progress.
Exactly, accepting as a report of progress. Thank you. No, it's okay. Ms. Dougherty?
So I'm just looking at this, the Mass, Massachusetts Evaluation Model. And I don't know if this was sent to me earlier, I'm just, I didn't look at it. I'm looking at it now and remembering, there's a lot of details about how the individual rating's going to be aggregated. So we're not getting into that yet. That's going to happen down in March, you're talking about? Okay.
Yep, it'll happen over time. We need to first identify what the goals are. That's the first step.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Good. All right. So motion to adjourn by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Ms. Clark. Thank you.